Good evening. I'm Rod Passion on behalf of Millbury Community Television. I'd like to welcome our audience and candidates here in the Millbury City Council chambers, as well as our viewing audience at home, to the Millbury City Council Candidates Forum. This time, I'd like to introduce the candidates, starting from my left: Annie Oliva, Anne Schneider, Douglas Radke, and Ruben Holliver. Also like to introduce our timer for this evening is Sue Charles, who'll be monitoring the timing and response of the candidates. Before we get started, let's go quickly over tonight's format. Each candidate will be given three minutes for an opening statement, and we'll have questions from this audience here. They'll put it on a three-by-five card that'll be handed around, and our viewing audience can call in their questions by phone, or this year, even by email, and you'll see those, the phone number and the email address at the bottom of your TV screen. Your questions can be addressed to one candidate, but all candidates will have the chance to respond. Responses will be limited to one minute, that's the questions, and then the forum will conclude with a two-minute closing statement in a reverse order of the opening statements. The opening statements were determined, the order by draw. This forum will be replayed on MCTV, and viewers can check our website for the schedule. That is at MCTV.TV. And we also have video on demand, so if you go to that same website, MCTV.TV, we have video on demand, and you can pick up this forum at that portion of our website. So, our first opening statement tonight will be from Annie Oliva.
Shall I begin?
Yes.
I'm running to retain my seat on the city council because I want to continue to help Millbury move forward and reach its full potential. I understand the need for experienced leadership in our community, and I know that my background will help me make to make wise and critical decisions for Millbury. I was humbled by the support expressed for me by the city council when appointed to the council earlier this year, as well as the support I've received in the community. I very much want to continue to serve the people of Millbury. My top priorities are building economic strength and sustainability, protecting private property rights, and ensuring public safety. I will bring my skills in managing and balancing budgets to task of creating a long-term, sustainable budget for Millbury. And if elected, I will continue to work with the business owners on the revitalization of our commercial sectors, and work with property owners, developers, and BARTs to bring a mix of businesses to generate new revenue for the city. I will also continue to work to build interest in and bring new business and jobs to Millbury. And if elected, I'll bring all of my marketing and negotiable skills to bear this effort. Professionally, I'm a realtor and an owner of a real estate business. My entire professional career has been in real estate, and I'm proud to carry on the tradition of an independent, small business. As a small business owner, I understand the importance of strategic planning and smart budgeting. I will bring these skills to the council. Over the course of my career, I've been a strong advocate for property rights, and working with elected officials to keep our community an attractive place to live, work, shop, and do business. If elected, I will remain vigilant in protecting the rights of property owners, and through my work in this area, I've developed working relationships with many local elected officials. This will help me to work more effectively with them to make our city and our region stronger. Millbury is a safe community with a small-town feeling, and to preserve these qualities, I will work to maintain our public safety services and help Millbury continue to attract and retain the best public service members. My husband, of 32 years, Jose, I've lived, we've lived in Millbury and have raised three children since 1991. My involvement in the community ranges from the Mills Athletic Boosters Club, scholarship committees for the Italian club, Coats for Kids, and I'm pleased to represent the city of Millbury on various committees and boards, including Business Advisory Committee and the Library JPA. Millbury has many attributes that we can build on, and in particular, our diversity. Millbury's facing challenges, but I believe by leveraging wide range of interests, skills, backgrounds, and experiences of Millbury's residents, we can collaborate and overcome to build a stronger community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Schneider.
Good evening, and thank you to MCTV for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Anne Schneider. I am running for city council because I have the experience and the qualifications to make Millbury an exceptional place to live and work. Millbury's my hometown. I graduated from Meadows, Taylor, and Cappuccino, and I moved home to care for my loving parents who are in the audience tonight. My experience makes me qualified to serve as your city council member as exemplified by the following: leadership, program development, and government liaison at Hewlett-Packard, and the Santa Clara County Manufacturing Group, now called the Silicon Valley Leadership Group; balancing budgets and contract management at the city of San Jose; economic development at the University of California, Santa Cruz, where I provided technical assistance in the creation and expansion of companies and jobs to over 1,500 businesses. I was an educator at the college and the high school level, and I've researched and received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding over the years for various projects. I'm the lead in the Sierra Club on political activities, including lobbying at the state and federal level, as well as working with many local officials up and down the peninsula. In each position, I have worked with staff, as well as officials, at city, county, state, and federal level, working on laws, working on regulations, and public education. Locally, I'm an advisor to the Green Youth Alliance at Mills High School, and as a Red Cross disaster volunteer, many duties, but a big project, I assisted with the city of San Bruno in recovery from the San Bruno gas explosion. So, much experience in helping protecting us from disaster. My priorities, aligned with fiscal responsibility and about balanced budget, are, number one, public safety: supporting our sheriff and firefighters, implementing traffic calming in our neighborhoods, ensuring residents are disaster-prepared. Two, economic development: retain and support our existing businesses, but also attract new and diverse businesses, and finally, providing opportunities for our veterans. Three, growing the quality of life in our community by enhancing programs for seniors and youth, keeping our seniors in their homes, engaging youth and city government, and bringing together our diverse community. And finally, the environment: growing the Green Youth Alliance, strengthening the city's climate action plan, and helping roll out new organics collection program. I have the experience and the qualifications to serve as your city council representative. I would like to hear your issues and concerns. Together, we can make Millbury exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Radke.
Hi. My name's Doug Radke. I'm running for city council. I've lived here for 15-plus years of my life, attended St. Dunston and Mills High School. First job here was Blockbuster Video and Starbucks, and my second job right here in town. I attended UCR for college, where I majored in accounting. I currently work for Bedawi and Associates CPAs, a firm specializing in municipal and special district audits, some clients as our nearby neighbors, San Mateo and Redwood City. I was driven to run for city council because my career has given me clear insight to the financial problems facing Millbury. Our city's standing right now on $72 million of long-term debt, and this year projects a $4 million deficit. Our water rates have increased 6% for the last five years. All things remaining constant, there'll be movement towards increasing a 6% for another five years. We've lost our police department, we've lost our fire department. Now, the city claims we've made drastic cuts and are running on the bare minimum. If that were the case, why then the need to raise more revenue? There's a special fire assessment passed in '04, renewed in '09, that was supposed to save our fire department, so why is the discussion about renewing this tax again council meeting on July 8th? It would appear to me that the sole purpose of this assessment is to cover general fund budgetary shortfalls. May 28th, council men discussed the feasibility of property tax increases, sales tax, special assessments, and other ways to take your hard-earned tax dollars. Residents of Millbury, ask yourself, do you really feel you're getting the level of service from your city that you expect for the amount of money you put in? Bottom line is, people of Millbury deserve better. If I ran my personal finances, like the city of Millbury runs theirs, I would be so flat-broke, so far in credit card debt, I'd have to declare bankruptcy. The path to prosperity for Millbury is simple: spend less than you take in. If City Hall wants more revenue, stop punishing the taxpayer, and encourage economic growth and business. These things I have extensive plans for that I'd like to share with you tonight. It appears to me like so many levels of government, the problem of our predecessors, and the consequences of past choices are being passed to people and my generation to fix. Help me fix these problems, Millbury. Support me with a vote in the upcoming election.
Thank you. Ruben Holliver.
Hello. MCTV, thank you for hosting this forum. My name is Ruben Holliver, and I'd be honored to serve as Millbury's next council member. Many of you knew my mother, Nadia Holliver. She served on the city council for 11 years and worked tirelessly for Millbury until her final days. I'm inspired by her commitment to public service. It is a value that she and my father, Richard, instilled in me. My parents chose Millbury because it is a great place to live. We moved here when I was three years old, just after my brother Evan was born. We came to Millbury for its excellent schools and safe neighborhoods. I'm running for the city council to make sure Millbury continues to be a great place to live. Evan and I attended local public schools. I was a Boy Scout, attending the rank of Eagle Scout. I served as student commissioner of the Sister City Commission, and I interned at Congressman Lantos District Office. After graduating from the University of Washington, I returned to Millbury. I work at a growing biotech company in San Carlos. I'm walking door-to-door and talking to Millbury voters, and most people agree that Millbury is a great place to live. We're in the middle of a world economic and cultural center, yet we retain that special, small-town feel. Millbury has attracted a diverse mix of people, which are a great source of community strength. The city and our state were hit hard by the recession. I thank our city council for working hard to keep Millbury strong. I applaud our city employees who've stood up and sacrificed to preserve vital services for Millbury residents. Now we are emerging from the hard times. It will take leadership to thoughtfully plan out our future, grow our local economy, all the while being careful stewards of our finances. As a city council member, I will put the utmost priority on public service, public safety, sorry. I'll make sure that our police and fire services stay strong. I'll also focus on business development, to create jobs and bring in revenues we need for city services. Millbury is well-possessed to get its fair share of tech industry jobs. We're right between San Francisco and Silicon Valley, with convenient access to the airport and public transportation. I'll work with businesses to make it easier to set up shop in Millbury. I'll work with neighboring cities to consolidate some services and save costs. But I'll make sure that Millbury retains control of its destiny and gets better, not reduced, service delivery. I'll do my homework and listen to every perspective to make sure that our decisions are fully informed and best for Millbury as a whole. As a council member, I will give my all to make sure that Millbury remains a vibrant, safe, and prosperous community that looks after all its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates, for the opening statement. Let's go to the question segment of our program tonight, and we'll start with Anne Schneider, first question. Snyder, first question. This is involving team-building skills. The question is, discuss your team-building skills and how these will influence the other council members in meeting goals in a timely manner.
Well, I grew up on a swim team, and then I was a coach, so I actually have lived most of my life as a part of a team and growing a team, and we all know that we are only as good as the weakest member of our team. So, in terms of city council, I think the first thing we do as a team is we keep our eye on the goal of the city, and the eye on the, the goal is maintaining services, increasing revenue, so that we can both maintain and expand services, and try to put aside any of our personal goals. Team-building, you know, there are lots of programs out there, but I think being good to each other, treating each other as if we, how we would like to be treated, and remembering that we serve the city, we don't serve each other, is how we build a strong team. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go in this direction, so Douglas Radke.
Oh, same question. Well, I've been on many teams in my life, you know, I played football in high school, did wrestling, was a member of fraternity in my college, I'm on the, currently on the Board of Directors, formerly as Treasurer, and now as a Director of Expansion. So, I have extensive experience in bringing people together and building teams, whether it comes from sports, whether it comes from fraternity, social organizations. I feel I bring a whole bunch of team-building ability to city council.
Okay. And Ruben Holliver.
Well, in my current position, my job in San Carlos with Natera, the department that I work in has grown tremendously over the past couple of years, and over that time, I've trained about 30 employees or so. And while, you know, we don't all necessarily see eye to eye on the same issues, I think, you know, we certainly can get along, we can certainly find ways to come together and common ground, and I think that's something that we definitely need on the city council, not that we don't already have it, but if we can't agree on an issue, at least see what can we agree on and go from there to come up with a consensus.
Thank you. And Ms. Oliva.
Well, I don't know who asked this question, but thank you, because this is one of my fortes, I would like to think, you know, everybody likes to say they're good at something, and one of my, one of my fortes and what I think I'm good at is a team leadership. You have a team, but you have to have a leader, and with that, of course, in childhood, I played on games, and then I became the leader and I became the coaches of softball teams and such for the kids, soccer. But my life team is my office and my family, and I've learned to exercise that within my real estate career and also here in the city council. I raise my family. I'm, I'm the team captain in the family. My business, I have a team partner, Denise Baker, who has been a partner in real estate longer than most marriages that we've had, and in real estate, I became the president of San Mateo County Association of Realtors to run that team. So, that's what I want to bring to the table to the council. I want to be part of the leadership team.
Thank you. Let's go to Doug with the next question, and there's been a series of questions, all related to the same theme, if I can summarize. It's the need for the diversity of businesses in Millbury, and what would be your plans for bringing in different types of businesses and jobs, and what type of business would you focus on?
Well, definitely, that's a great question. I mean, if you take a stroll down Broadway, there's six empty storefronts, to my count, that could be filled with businesses. There's one idea I have, and it was a great idea that the city of San Jose implemented, in that they temporarily lifted the fees for business licenses and permits for remodeling, and guess what? They filled that downtown very quick. In terms of the types of businesses I would court, anybody who wants to do business in Millbury is welcome to be here. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. And Ruben.
You know, I agree that we definitely need a rich, diverse mix of businesses in Millbury. I think a lot of that starts with the Site One area and the area around the BART and Caltrain station. That, I think, is an excellent location that has certainly been underutilized over the years, and we need to do something to improve that area and make it attractive for businesses to come in. I work in the high-tech field, and that's something that we see a lot of up and down the peninsula, but very little of that in Millbury. And I think with our, you know, geographic strengths that we have, our public transit, I think we're an excellent place for those type of businesses to come in, and I would certainly want to be a part of that going forward.
Thank you. Annie?
Would you repeat the question again?
Yes, the question was, what would be your plans for bringing new businesses and jobs into Millbury, and especially focusing on diversity of types of businesses?
Okay, well, I think that in regards to Millbury's diversity now, I think it's one of, one of the better qualities of Millbury, so the diversity, I think, is here. As far as bringing in new businesses, it's, we're at a, at a time where we actually can promote, and definitely the transportation had where they were speaking about in regards to the high techs and the transportation that can bring people that don't live in the city in, and the ones that want to go out, out. But we have an opportunity now with our economy that there are people that are lending and being able to be entrepreneurs and start businesses, and I think that if we can just promote Millbury as a city, we have so much to attract.
Thank you. And Anne?
Hi. When I was considering running for Millbury, the first thing I did was get a list of our business licenses in town, and what I found is that we didn't code our businesses to types of business. My experience doing economic development under the university was to find missing niches and how to fill those. So, the first thing that I would do is get a good number of how many restaurants we have versus how many retail, what types of food. We do have a preponderance of Asian restaurants. We could be bringing in more diversity in our restaurants, but we could be bringing in a diversity of a lot of other businesses. The other problem that we have here in Millbury in our existing buildings is the size of the space, so that makes the development projects that my fellow candidates have talked about critical. We need to build or support the building of square footage that will attract in those types of businesses. So, we need larger square footage, both for storefronts, as well as for office and tech. Finally, I would use my business background, my relationships with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group and other business organizations to bring in new businesses.
Thank you. Next question, and this will go to Ruben. What is your plan, or do you have ideas, to ensure that downtown Millbury maintains clean streets, sidewalks? This question, viewer thinks that currently that they're not kept in a good maintained manner.
Well, I certainly would like to see clean streets and sidewalks in Millbury. We've been very much cash-strapped recently with our budgeting, so I think, you know, the key to being able to maintain sanitation downtown and keep our streets clean is to bring in more revenue into the city. So, I think that starts with retail, with, you know, property tax, sales tax, TOT tax, and bringing in that revenue so that we're not constantly cutting back, cutting back, cutting back, to bare-bones services that we've done in the past.
Thank you. Annie?
I think it's an effort of collaboration. If a new business comes in, or an old business exists, somebody's walking by and they're, they're patronizing our downtown, or the neighbor of something that needs to be fixed up, it's all collaboration. The city gets a phone call, the city gets somebody out there, we have a talk, we have a team leader, and we collaborate to make sure that if there is something, whether it's environmental, the wind's blowing the leaves in, or whether it's a group hanging out in front, we need to collaborate and fix the issue.
Thank you. And Anne?
As any of us who've walked downtown, or any of the people that I've talked to by knocking on your doors, some of our biggest problems are cups, single-serve food packaging, and cigarette butts, and it is going to take both the shop owners and keepers, but it's going to take all of us to help with that. So, smokers need to put their butts away, and we, the city actually has a program working with our restaurants to go back to reusable silverware, go back to reusable cups. You can go to Pete's and, and get coffee, believe it or not, in a reusable cup, and that will reduce those containers that are ending up in the city, garbage containers. The city has also recently changed the collection cycle on that to help improve that. The reality is, we live in a windy area, and we need to reduce what's going in those garbage cans, and we need our store owners to keep the front of their shops clean. And if that means they need to do some pressure washing, then they need to do pressure washing.
Thank you. Doug?
When you're talking about the cleanliness of the streets and sanitation, the level of service your city gives you, I think it starts with the dollars and cents, it starts with wise financial management of the books. The whole reason we have cuts, and the whole reason we have furloughs, and the whole reason things aren't the way they should be, because the books aren't in order. Now, when it comes to, also, when it comes to cleaning, keeping streets clean, you know, I had a chat with some of the business owners on Broadway, and I think they should expand some good neighbor ordinances to local businesses. There are some people in our community who are not being good neighbors on Broadway, and I think we can definitely pass some ordinances to help fix that, but I think it begins with managing the books well and raising revenue the right way, by encouraging economic development, better zoning, and business growth.
Thank you. This next question is somewhat tied in. This will go to Annie. This questionnaire is saying that there's a lack of enforcement of the smoking ordinance, which apparently prohibits smoking within 25 feet of established serving, establishment serving food, and what would you do to promote enforcement of that ordinance?
If there's an ordinance, it needs to be enforced. What would I personally do to that? I wouldn't, as a city council member, wouldn't have the authority to do anything for that. But if the people were at the council meeting and they wanted to be heard and they wanted to change an ordinance, I'd be a listener.
Yes, and, and maybe the question really is, what would be your position on that ordinance, whether you support it or not?
I don't know what the ordinance would be.
I think the ordinance is that one cannot smoke within 25 feet of an establishment that serves food.
I'd have to listen to what the residents wanted to make my decision.
I strongly support an ordinance to keep smokers away from where people are enjoying food and drink. We, I lost my grandfather to lung cancer, so sorry, smokers out there. I look at you and I wish that we could get you help to reduce your smoking, because I've seen what devastation it can cause a family. So, I support the ordinance. I know that our law enforcement officers have bigger, better crimes to go after, but when the community is made aware, and the good news with our sheriff department is they're much more visible, you know, putting in a good word here, there, encouraging our food service vendors to put signage up, to remind their customers not to smoke within vicinity. There are a number of things we can do with both education and with a little bit of enforcement, and just making sure that the public knows that we have that law.
Thank you. Okay.
When it comes to the enforcement of the smoking ordinance, I think it definitely comes first line to the business owner, to create an environment that encourages customers to come in. I mean, you wouldn't want to go to a restaurant where people are smoking right in front of the door, not a hospitable environment. Secondly, to my knowledge, Millbury has a part-time code enforcement employee, and that all goes back to managing the dollars and cents. We need to expand that. We need to have people enforcing these ordinances full-time. Yeah.
Thank you. Anne, Ruben.
Well, I do support that ordinance. I think it is very difficult to enforce it, you know, or we don't simply have the staffing to have, you know, officers at every corner looking out for people smoking on the streets. But I think we need to make sure that our residents and that our patrons of our restaurants and downtown are aware of the ordinance, like Anne said, to make it, and put up signs and storefronts, and to talk to business owners to make sure that they know that residents, just to make sure that people who are walking down the street are not smoking and violating the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. This question goes to Anne Schneider first, and it ties into services and maybe the impact of reduction of services. Do you have a plan to increase revenue in Millbury?
As I understand it, with Millbury's five-year budget forecast, we have a budget surplus right now, but unless we do heavy and quick economic development, bringing in new businesses, growing, developing our underutilized sites, we will have a budget shortfall within 14 months or so. So, we need to strongly encourage our economic development program. We, as representatives, all of the council, need to be out there recruiting new businesses as, and asking our public to help recruit. We also need to be getting our, our businesses that are lining up to build out at BART and/or Site One, to get their plans in, and then let's work as a community to get these plans processed and construction started right away. Thank you.
Well, I think, actually, could you repeat the question one more time?
Do you have a plan that's related to increasing revenue in Millbury?
Yeah, my plan for increasing revenue comes organically with business growth and economic opportunity. It starts with, you know, one thing on the table is the general plan, that needs to be updated. We need to zone better. I mean, I just look out this door, and I can see economic opportunity on every corner. We've got a parking lot over there that's not being utilized effectively, and all you need to do to see good use of land is look over the Safeway, look over the parking lot next to that. You could easily build a two-tier store. What we also need to do is work actively with the Millbury Chamber of Commerce, you know, in order to attract businesses here, and like I suggested, the plan that the city of San Jose did was very effective in bringing businesses. We did something like that, I'm sure those six empty storefronts in Broadway would be filled very quickly.
Thank you. Ruben?
Thank you. You know, I think a lot of the business revenue growth that we need to look at is in the area around the BART and Caltrain station, as been mentioned before. The area on the BART property in Sites Five and Six has been just a parking lot for many years now, and the city's not bringing in any revenue from that area. I think that, that real estate is way too valuable to be using it on a parking lot. We need to make sure that we can get something built there that will generate revenue for the city, whether it be sales tax or hotel tax, as well as the Site One area as well. I think that area really needs to be updated and improved to bring in businesses that will generate revenue for the city.
Thank you. Annie?
I have a plan, yes, and so do a lot of people, and I think that the opportunity And I think that the opportunities come to Millbrae, because there are sites available. And quite frankly, we can't really blame anything from the past few years for no development. We came out of a very hard economic time, and I see that we do have a lot of opportunities on the table. Marketing will be something we have to do. We have to get those sites out there to people to know that they are available, that don't know that they're available, and then we can make those plans come forward. But I can't really blame anything from the last 10 years to not having growth. We all have experienced the same thing, whether it's in your own home or in the city of Millbrae.
Thank you. This question goes to Doug, and actually ties in nicely because BART was mentioned twice. And the last question, the question is, what kind of development would be most beneficial to the city and why, in the BART development Sites Five and Six?
Well, right now, the plan that they have for those sites is woefully out of Dane. That's a priority that it needs to be updated. Frankly, I think if you want to bring in revenue to the city, generate sales tax revenue, build retail businesses, it's just that simple. So their emphasis should be on retail businesses, and obviously, you know, we want to build transit-oriented communities too. But what makes the most sense at this point is primarily focusing on retail. Let's say retail, big stores. They'll bring up people from other town, they'll come here, they'll spend money. It's really that simple.
Thank you. Ruben?
Well, I think Millbrae has done a good job at developing close to the train station, but we need to continue that, and I think Zones Five and Six are certainly key. As I mentioned, that area has really not generated any revenue yet for the city, but we do need retail there, we do need restaurants to bring in sales tax, and putting in residential units there too are certainly needed as well. So I think what we need to do is we need to continue to move forward on that project and, because I think that's really a key for the city and where it's going to be developing in the future. Thank you.
Excuse me, was the question the best revenue for the city?
No, it was, what type of development for BART Sites Five and Six?
Would be the best for the city?
Yes.
There's no doubt that would be a hotel. That would bring in the best revenue for the city.
Okay.
That's my answer.
Good answer.
Actually, I think BART gives us an amazing opportunity in Millbrae for transit-oriented development and for some amazing design. We have some of our most significant acreage for mixed use, that's what transit-oriented development is. So it'll have retail, commercial, it'll have a mix of office, and it can have a mix of smaller apartments for our younger population who don't want to have to worry about taking care of a yard, but they want to be able to hop on BART to go enjoy activities in the city or the train to get down to San Jose for activities down there. So I think it's a unique opportunity we have for transit-oriented development, mixed use. I have to disagree that Big Box in that location is not great, because Big Box people take their car to Big Box. And what we need down there is where people are going to go either by bus, or by train, or by plane, or by BART. So we need a different mix on that. And with the hotel, my understanding with the hotel is that the BART did a feasibility study and found that they could actually increase revenue without the hotel, than more revenue without the hotel than with the hotel.
Thank you. The, this will go to Ruben. The fire assessment was mentioned a couple of times, and this question says, if the fire assessment is not renewed, one-third of the fire department's budget would be lost. How would you cover the cost if you do not support a renewal of the assessment? This goes to Ruben first.
Well, I do support a renewal of the assessment. I think, you know, ideally, it was something that we would probably rather not have to go to voters again, but we simply don't, can't afford not to do it at this point. I think moving forward, we need to make sure that we can continue to develop businesses to bring in the revenue that will avoid this in the future, but right now, we simply can't afford to do that. And, you know, I actually worked on the Community College Parcel Tax Campaign that helped to save our community colleges from severe budget cuts. And I think I could bring that experience to helping to bring our community together to help the fire assessment and keep our fire services strong. Thank you.
And I do too support the fire assessment. I want to know what the fire assessment will be, so that if in fact we can make a long-range plan, because to go back to the community, that we are already paying for a fire assessment, so to say, well, we have another one, yes, we will continue the old one, but I want to make sure that we cover the future as well. So I'd like to do, you know, the homework to be done before we go out to the voters and say, we need to have an additional fire assessment. I want to know what the amount to cover the future will be as well.
Thank you. Ann?
Yeah, I hope I studied this correctly. My understanding is the fire assessment is terminating next June, so that source of revenue is going away. So I strongly support a fire assessment. I commit to doing the work with the community to try to educate the community of what will happen if we don't have that fire assessment. So if we lose that $1.2 million, what will we have to do? Will we have to close the station anyway? Will we have to cut firefighters? Will we have to reduce services somewhere else? There is going to be a reduction if we do not pass that fire assessment. Long-term, we need to understand that the fire services, as are all our first responders, are critical to the health of our community. And I work in the environmental field more and more so. Our firefighters and our police officers are our first defense against changing weather patterns, stronger storms, increased sea level rises, and fires. Rim fire being a good example. We need to have a strong first responder department, and we need to fund it, and we need to come to agreement with that as a community.
Thank you. And Doug?
When it comes to the fire assessment, you know, once upon a time in Millbrae, we had a fire department, we had a police department, and we didn't have any special assessments to fund it. So I would definitely like more homework done on this issue. Now, I'm not going to outright say I oppose it or support it, but I think more research needs to be done. Definitely, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. And we're switching gears altogether, and this goes to Annie. How would you address the lack of activities for teens and young children in Millbrae?
The lack of activity for teens? I don't know. I see them walking all over Millbrae. In fact, today, there was a meeting in regards to making them safer walking around. So the lack of activity would be, if we can get some of this economic growth going on and creating some new businesses, maybe we can have them get some part-time jobs and go to work and have some fun doing that.
And Ann?
Again, I grew up as a student athlete, and I find it very sad that we don't have a public swimming pool in Millbrae. And what I would like to do then is work with our existing school districts and the high school. After this meeting that Annie talked about this morning, I talked to the San Mateo Union High School District about opening up either Mills, Cap, or both, so that we can make sure that our kids know how to swim. In this day and age, and in this area, we need to know how to swim. I'm a strong supporter of all sports. I think it creates good citizens, I think it creates good teamwork, and it creates a strong personality. So I can commit to the community that I am happy to look at all of the ways that we can introduce more sports, more activities. I think our Park and Rec does a pretty good department, a pretty good job with it, but I think we can, we can always improve, we can learn from our neighbors. I think when I first moved back home, we were partnering with Burlingame Park and Rec, and I could at least go swim at Burlingame High School's new gorgeous pool. So I think with more partnerships, we can provide more opportunities for our teens.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes, it was, if I can find it here. What would you do to increase activities for teens and young children here in Millbrae?
Well, I definitely think Ann's on to the right idea. I think we should have and explore shared services, you know, with other cities to expand recreation. Definitely, I think economic growth and encouraging businesses to come will give kids something to do, part-time jobs, and also places to go and things to do. I think those two things will definitely bring us on the right track.
Thank you. Ruben?
Well, I think opening the youth center at the Old Scout House certainly will help to bring in, to be a good location for youth activities and more recreational services for our youth. I think, yeah, we have to continue to expand our Park and Rec Department, work with the school district to use our athletic fields, and I think a community swimming pool would be an excellent idea. I'm not sure where they'd put it, but, and if not, I think, continue to partner with Mills or Cappuccino to use their facilities.
And this question goes to Ann. And the home audience, they have four questions that are very specific. There's been questions answered about bringing in new businesses and jobs to Millbrae, and three questions are asking, could you be more specific with the plan of how you would accomplish this goal?
Right here off the top of my head. As I said, the first thing I would do would identify the types of businesses that we do not have, or what we use, or the term used, where we're losing retail to our cities next to us. If it's something that isn't possibly Big Box, then we can try to attract those types of businesses. We were chatting with some teenagers, how they actually hop on the bus to go to San Mateo to go to a particular place that has a particular soda thing that they like. Sorry, kids, I'm not cool enough to know what the soda thing is. But we can find out what those businesses are. We can, of course, be communicating with our high-tech partners and find out what type of office space do they need, and then work in our development plans to bringing in those office spaces. During the San Bruno Fire, I worked in the YouTube office off of Bay Hill Park, and they, a lot of our high-tech firms do use satellite offices. So can we bring in some satellite businesses here because of our proximity to the transportation hub, to the airport? I think it can go on and on like that, but really, we need to identify our empty niches.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Oh, the question was, in summarizing from a number of questions coming from the home office, there's been talk about increasing businesses, opportunities, and jobs in Millbrae, but could you be more specific about what your plan would be?
Besides encouraging and filling those storefronts on Broadway with businesses, definitely, I think the high-tech industry brings a unique possibility to Millbrae. And where I think I bring in the strength is, I have myself co-founded a social gaming startup several years ago, and I know what founders and tech people want. I'm actually actively working on a project to bring shared office space to Millbrae. I think it's definitely within the realm of possibility. There's tons of startups such as Rocket Space, names like Code Cave, where they rent out per individual these office spaces, and it presents a unique opportunity. Well, you don't need a lot of room, you just need an office building, and you can generate tons of jobs and prosperity for Millbrae. I think that's definitely something I'm going to gun for, and I know individuals who'd be interested in investing that in Millbrae.
Thank you.
Well, there was a, there was a very interesting presentation at the council meeting last night by a company called STEM that moved here about a year ago. And they really thought that Millbrae was a great place for them because of its access to the transit hub, its ability to attract elite talent from up and down the peninsula, from San Francisco down to San Jose. And so I think, you know, high-tech is certainly what we have to be striving for in the future. And I think in order to do that, we have to look at what are the best sites that we can bring that in, whether it's Site One, Site Five, Site Six, or a very, or any other place, and work with developers to create the type of office space that will attract in tech companies and growing businesses into Millbrae.
Annie?
So specifically, what I have done to promote businesses in Millbrae is, we did put a little group together, there was about 10 of us, and we met for about eight times and made lists of businesses, of which we actually contacted. And we went and told them about our transportation hub, and we told them about the growth in Millbrae and the sites that were available. So I have had feelers out there specifically, I've done that on my own and with this group of Millbrae residents. What I've learned, that you have to make Millbrae a destination place, and just like the Art and Wine Festival, to bring people in for some other reason to be known is part of a marketing plan. With the signage that was also presented last night at City Council, that if we can get the destination and the marketing and then direction after the get-off BART on where to go, it'll be something that'll generate businesses to want to be here.
Thank you. And Doug, we'll start you with this one, and this is a question that has come up every year that we've had in this candidates forum. What are your plans for fixing the numerous potholes and erosion throughout Millbrae streets?
I'm glad you asked that question, because I think the city should be responsible for things like that. I mean, I have a little personal anecdote to share. I have friends who live on Merchison Ashton, and there's potholes on that street, enormous potholes. And when they confronted the city about it, they were told, well, there's just simply no budget, I'm sorry to fix that. And later on, they were given a notice to fix it at their own cost. Cost them $5,000 each, cost them $10,000. I mean, we're talking about services, and we're talking about roads. That's the most basic kind of service out there. The city needs to take care of their responsibility and fix those streets. And like I said, it comes with managing the dollars and cents, you know, taking in more than you spend, and we can do things like that.
Thank you. Ruben?
Well, I think, you know, the city definitely needs to take, take action and make sure that we are keeping good control of our streets and fixing our potholes. Now, we have a very hard-working staff that is working as hard as they can, but we've been strapped for cash. We don't, simply can't afford to fix every pothole at once. I think we need to make sure that we have a sustainable budget for many years to come, and that we have the revenue streams coming in, so that we're not cash-strapped, so that we can continue to grow our staff, and make sure that we can fix our potholes, and make sure that, you know, we keep our services strong, so that we don't have potholes in the street.
Thank you.
Well, let's be honest, it's not just the potholes, it's underneath the potholes too. The infrastructure needs work, and quite frankly, we don't have the money to do it. We need to bring in the revenue. And so I'm going to go back to the development of the downtown, the marketing of bringing revenues in. That's what we need to concentrate on, so that we can fix those kind of things. We do have basic needs, like no potholes in our streets, but the bottom line is, we have them. So to sit and moan and groan about them is not going to fix them. What we need to do is get out there and generate some income, make Millbrae a happy place to come to, make it very successful for business to be successful in, and then we can generate that income to fix that.
If anybody's been watching the national news, you've heard about infrastructure. Well, roads are infrastructure, and we do need to maintain them. We, obviously, Annie is correct, we need to increase our revenue so that we can take care of our roads. But in addition to that, we need to be aggressive at looking at outside funding sources for infrastructure development. Now, a lot of that funding at the national level has gone through that cycle, so we need to be encouraging our League of California Cities and our other partners, as well as in Sacramento, as well as in Washington, to continue to have those agencies or those government levels put more money into infrastructure, and then we need to have to go after those infrastructure funds. There are some other unique funding areas out there that can help with paving projects. I work in the recycling field, the state of California has a tire recycling program. There are many places where we can start searching out to try to find additional funds. The tire program is to use rubberized asphalt, which costs a little bit more in the onset, but has a longer life, and actually reduces sound. So this is the time to be creative and look for new funding.
Thank you. And this goes to Ruben, this will be actually our last question tonight, and also deals with the environment. This person is concerned about the noise coming from the airport and the flights, day and night, pollution and noise question, and the impact it has on Millbrae. Do you have any suggestions on how the city council could work with the airport to alleviate some of this?
Not very many. You know, I think, obviously, being close to the airport is something that I think is more of an, is certainly an asset to our community. And one thing that is going to come of that is noise. I don't think there's a whole lot that can be done to reduce that noise. I don't think anyone wants to put up a noise wall or something to block the airport, but I think, you know, the airport is something that has been very beneficial to our community and has really generated a lot of revenue for our community, and I think noise is something that's going to come with that.
Thank you.
I would agree. I mean, it's something that is very positive to our city. We're so close to the airport, and it actually is a luxury in a lot of aspects. The noise is not a luxury, and there's not a lot that the city council in Millbrae can do about the noise to the airport.
Yes.
We live on Palm Avenue, so like many of the neighborhoods here in Millbrae, we sometimes have to stop talking when those airplanes take off, and believe it or not, especially at 1:00 in the morning. In terms of what we can do with the airport, we can make sure that they have the monitoring stations up and that they are collecting data, because, and then when we notice those unusual peak noise periods, we as citizens need to call into the airport's alarm, they've got a system. You can go right online, type in the time and your location, and they can monitor it, because the squeaky wheel does sometimes get fixed. And with the airport, a number of our homes here were renovated with more soundproofing windows. They weren't the prettiest, but they definitely do block some of the sound. In terms of our new developments, we need to make sure that they have good soundproofing. Any of the remodeling, especially if they're in the jet-warming-up zones, we need to make sure that residents know about the noise. And I had this funny feeling, and this is a good side, people, because if we develop El Camino Real and we're adding certain heights, maybe that'll help block some of the sound.
And Doug?
I think some cities, such as San Bruno, I believe they did some soundproofing for certain residents in a certain area close to the airport. I mean, if we didn't have this budget deficit, we didn't have the problems that we have now, maybe that could be something that could be researched and looked into. A monitoring station's definitely come into play. I think updating the general plan, I think encouraging businesses to come, building office buildings, is, yes, going to create that height, and it's going to block out the sound from the airport. I think that's the best way to go about that.
Thank you. That concludes our question segment. We had a number of questions. Couldn't get to all of them, but thankfully, both at home and studio for submitting the questions. So we're going to start with our closing statements now, and the first closing statement will be in reverse order, so we'll start with Reuben.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting this forum. Voters will choose two council members this November from a strong field of candidates. I love Millbrae. This is my hometown. It has been a caring community for me and my family, and I want to make sure that it stays that way. The world and our city are constantly changing. The task of leadership is to manage the inevitable changes, to tackle them head-on in ways that strengthen our city. Whether it is balancing a budget, providing vital public safety, recreational and city services, or working with businesses to bring jobs to Millbrae while preserving our small-town feel, I'm ready for the task. I will enrich the city council by bringing a voice of a new generation to City Hall. We're a generation that embraces diversity and understands that welcoming people from different cultural backgrounds makes our city more vibrant. And we're a generation that is struggling to find good jobs but wants to keep alive the dream we inherited from our parents and grandparents, that hard work still ensures a brighter future. I've enjoyed going door-to-door, meeting voters. I'm endorsed by two current council members, three former Millbrae mayors, four school board members, and scores of community, business, and labor leaders. Millbrae has a very bright future. I pledge to work my heart out to keep it a caring community with strong services and abundant opportunities for everyone. I look forward to constructive relationship with the other council members. I know that we can do, I know we can do what it takes to shape Millbrae into a better place for generations to come. My name is Reuben Hollibur, and I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Reuben. Doug?
This strikes me that the reoccurring theme of all this is self-evident, that our city government over the last decade has made many promises and failed to deliver them. I've shared with you the personal anecdote about my friend on the corner of Ashton-Murchison, intersection's in bad shape. When it was brought to the city's attention, they had to fix it at their own cost. Looking at the comprehensive annual financial reports, I see a lot of room to cut expenditures. We're not at the bare minimum. So how about we stop looking at the ways to spend more money, instead use the money that we have to fix our roads, to spend on infrastructure? You know, I absolutely resent the taxpayer and resident of Millbrae being treated like an ATM machine. We should be looking towards developing our reserves instead of the nonsense where we live paycheck to paycheck on every annual budget. I'd like to close off with an old saying that's been told to me many times in my personal life and business. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. So Millbrae, stop the insanity. Ask yourself, are you better off last year? Are you better off five years ago? Are you better off than 10 years ago? The answer to my questions, maybe, or resounding no, then vote for a candidate who actually wants to fix the problem. Help me fix this city by casting your vote for me. Doug Radke, thank you.
And Ann?
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. With your vote, I will make Millbrae my priority. I will work to pass the fire assessment to keep our community safe. I'll work on implementing traffic calming measures in our neighborhoods, ensure that our residents are disaster-prepared, grow our economic base to bring in new revenue to the city to support our city services, provide opportunities for veterans, enhance the programs for our seniors and youth, and strengthen the city's climate action plan. As you heard in my opening statement, I bring experience working in the private, public, and nonprofit sectors, developing and completing projects. I have served on numerous boards and committees. I have proven leadership skills. I have a long record of taking on projects, bringing together diverse stakeholders, and getting the job done. With your vote, I can bring my public, private, and nonprofit organizational experiences to help expand Millbrae's economic opportunities, increasing our revenues, so that we can provide top-quality services to all. I am thankful to be endorsed by Congresswoman Jackie Speer, Senator Jerry Hill, Supervisor Dave Pine, Councilwoman Marjana Colapietro, and many other elected officials, the Sierra Club, and other organizations. With your vote, I will listen and work with you and give Millbrae 100%. You can contact me at 650-697-6249, or ann@vote-the-number-four-annschneider.com, or visit my website at voteforannschneider.com. For those of you getting vote-by-mail ballots, you're going to see your ballot in a little over a week, on October 8. When you see it, vote for Ann Schneider. I'm third on the ballot. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
And Annie?
Thank you, MCTV, for sponsoring this forum. Our city is darn lucky to have you. When I think about Millbrae, I see a great city with incredible promise to grow and thrive. And if elected, I will continue to concentrate on building a stronger economic base, protecting private property rights, and ensuring high quality of public safety. I believe I have a collection of experiences and the knowledge to do the job. I want to continue to serve the residents of Millbrae. I'm grateful to have all the endorsements of, starting with Mayor Gina Pappen, Vice Mayor Wayne Lee, and Councilman Robert Gottschalk, as well as Congresswoman Jackie Speer, State Senator Leland Yee, and Jerry Hill, Assemblymember Kevin Mullins, all five of our county supervisors, and so many of our Millbrae residents. Thank you. I'm proud to be a council member, and I'm thankful for your opportunity to work in my community. I hope I can earn your support and trust and return to the city council for a full term. Exciting times are ahead in Millbrae, and I'm looking forward to partner with my fellow council members to help keep Millbrae moving forward. If you would like more information about me, I encourage you to visit my website, oliva for council dot com. And I thank you for your interest, and I hope I can count on your vote November 5. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, candidates. That concludes our program, and I think a round of applause is probably in order for all the speakers. So, just to wrap up, MCTV, if you go to our website, we'll show replay dates. You can access this program on video on demand. MCTV can be viewed on Comcast at Channel 27, AT&amp;T, Channel 99, and we actually stream on the internet at mctv.tv. As was pointed out, the last date to register is October 21. The election is November 5, so get out and vote, and you can watch the results on MCTV. I want to thank everybody for attending, and thank you for tuning into MCTV, your community station. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Bye. 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 Bye.